All right, I've got ten forty and I will call this meeting of the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District Board of Supervisors to order. I hope you all had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday as we start our meeting today. I want to thank Pastor Marcio Nunzironi for taking time out of his busy holiday schedule to offer us a moment of reflection and prayer. Pastor, I will introduce him briefly first. The pastor Nunzironi is the Horizon West Campus Pastor at Winter Gardens First Baptist Church. Greetings to all the good people in Horizon West, a great, great, great area. After graduating with a Bachelor of Arts, he received his Master of Arts and Doctorate in Organizational Leadership from the New Orleans Baptist Theological Seminary. Pastor is also speaker and author committed to empowering individuals to achieve their potential through leadership founded on faith and service. Pastor, please take us away. Yeah, why don't you, yes, please.
Yes, sir. Morning, everyone. Morning, morning.
Morning.
Thank you. So I'm glad to be here with you today. I am a pastor, but also I have been a missionary in Brazil and in Africa. And because of that, we have been facing so many challenges. And I would like to talk about challenges today. So in two thousand and six, my wife and I, we decided to build a boat, a sailboat, to reach isolated people in the Brazilian coast. So we did that for ten years. And when we talk about boats, everything, everyone actually thinks about a fun time. But actually, we could see a lot of challenges. And as we were visiting the islands, we could see the lack of food, education, and everything that's needed, like hospitals, doctors. So what we decided to do, we decided to train people to go there, to donate their time to do it. So doctors, dentists, and et cetera. And why I'm talking about that? Because I believe that, like us, you have been facing so many challenges. And I would like to talk about Ecclesiastes three twenty-eight. So we have there a lot of seasons of life. There is a time to born, there is a time to die, there is a time to weep, a time to rejoice, a time to gather stones, and a time to scatter stones. But do you know what is never mentioned in the twenty-eight seasons of life? A time to quit. So we are closing this year, starting a new year. And I would like to leave this challenge for you, saying that's never time to quit. So I would like to close us in prayer, encouraging you to face your challenges and to never give up. Okay, let's pray. Father, we thank you for who you are and for everything that you are doing in our lives and in our community, Lord. We pray for our community. And we pray for these people here today, Lord, that they can be a blessing to our community. But also, Lord, I pray that you bless them and their families. And I pray that you help them in all the challenges that they have been facing and also the challenges that will come. As your words say, Lord, it is never time to quit. So give them strength and joy, Lord, to face the challenges of life and the challenges in their work. In Jesus' name that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you for that. Now, why don't you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, a religious chance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And now Eddie Fernandez, with the district's internal risk manager, will present our safety minute. Eddie, please.
Thank you, good morning. To our guests and visitors, we'd like to share a few important safety messages before we start today's meeting. In the event that we need to evacuate, please take note of the doors to the left and the right, the double doors that you can use to exit the building. On the right-hand side, if you use those double doors, there's an exit to the front of the building, which is where everyone came in this morning. And if you use these on the left, there is an exit on the backside of the door. Please make your way around the building. By that time, our employees who are also evacuating would make their way to the ends of the parking lot. Please follow them there and wait for further instruction after emergency services arrives and may gives us the all-clear to come back in. If you need a first aid kit or if there's a need for an AED, we have those at the front desk. And if you're comfortable enough on your way out during an evacuation, we also have fire extinguishers and fire alarm pull stations that are available for you to use, again, if you feel comfortable using those. Our safety message for this meeting is a holiday safety message. As the year comes to a close, we want to take a moment to reflect on the hard work that's been displayed throughout this entire year by our district team. To all the employees, leaders, board members, and community partners, your efforts have positively impacted our community, and we're deeply grateful. The holiday season is a time for celebration, rest, and reconnecting with loved ones, but it's also a time for heightened safety awareness. Whether you're traveling, staying at home, or enjoying festive activities, please remember to take precautions. Remember to follow traffic laws, practice fire safety, be mindful of your health, and be responsible when you're attending celebrations. Our strength and success as a community relies strongly on our commitment to each other's safety. Let's ensure that we return refreshed, recharged, and without injury this new year. Thank you, Stephanie, for all your support this year. And thank you again to all the employees and everyone who's a part of the district for your hard work. We wish you, your families, a joyful, restful, and safe holiday season. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eddie. Appreciate that. Now is the time for our public comment period. I do not have any cards in front of me. Do we have anyone who signed up to speak? Okay, in that case, we will move on to the consent agenda. We've got three items on the consent agenda. Item six point one is the approval of the meeting minutes from our November meeting. Item six point two covers a non-exclusive temporary easement with a permanent easement with Walt Disney Parks and Resorts, U.S. Inc. for underground communication lines and facilities. Item six point three covers a non-exclusive temporary easement with a permanent easement with People's Gas System for underground utility lines and facilities. Is there a motion to approve today's consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
With a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let the record reflect that the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we'll move on to agenda item seven, seven point one, the management report. For that, I would like to invite our district administrator, Stephanie Kapalusis, to deliver her report. Stephanie, good morning.
Thank you, Chairman. We have a lot going on and in process. One of the things you'll hear about later on in the meeting is updating the comp plan. So that is underway, making great progress. But we are also in the process of updating the EPCOT code, and that has been a tireless effort among our team. I look at Ellen when I say that. And just really proud of the work they've done and the time they've put into this, so grateful for them. Island Tower is open, the new Polynesian DVC, so that today will be the first day of opening. So that made it across the goal line. Also want to share, when we talk about growth and development that's happening here, one of the measures is our water clearances test. So any project we do, if it touches a water line, water main, any type, you have to do a test. And I look at Wendy when I say that, they have been very busy. And in fact, since July, I think those tests have nearly doubled. So when we talk about not just building inspectors, not just, but what the lab does. So even we may get days off, but because of how those tests run, they don't always get the same time off. So they are dedicated to what we do and making sure that we do have the best and grateful for that. So Wendy, I just want to thank you and your team, because when you look at that measure, we can talk about permits, we can talk about all those, but to see those tests double, unbelievable. And more to come, so it's not going to slow down as we move forward. But just before we end, I want to thank our team and all the work that they do day in and day out and how grateful I am to be here, but grateful I am to work with them. And then one last thing, the fire rescue team put together a retirement breakfast for the retirees from the fire department, and we had quite a few come back. So it was nice to kind of see the history and some of the guys that came back. So it was a great event and grateful that you continue that tradition and keep that moving. So that is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Stephanie. I appreciate that. And I like that we, and thank you for highlighting the work that's being done. And I think you're right, I'm glad that we take time at these meetings to sing the songs of the unsung heroes. This is a district of unsung heroes, so much that can't get done without the hard work that everybody's doing here. And I'm glad that we're able to take time and recognize that. So thank you, thank you for that. We will now move on to agenda item eight, general business. We've got four items under general business. Item eight point one seeks the approval to re-award bid number C zero zero six three nine nine for tank wagon fueling services to Palmdale Oil Company LLC with an estimated expenditure of three million five hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. We will hear from Chris Ferraro, Director of Reedy Creek Energy Services. Chris, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Vice Chairman, members of the board, and district leadership team. And I thank you, Vice Chair, for doing the hard work here. You always go through the details and the numbers. I appreciate that greatly. So I will start with the background on this service. So this is a service for our solid waste department, some district generators, and some servicing of tanks for fuel storage at the district fleet facility. So the solid waste team, another one of our unsung heroes. We have thirty-seven pieces of equipment, including waste disposal vehicles and other equipment that's critical to providing the service to district customers. It is a big business, and we collect about one hundred and thirty thousand tons of waste and recycled materials annually from the district's customers. That department runs two shifts, seven days a week, and this service provides overnight fueling for those vehicles so that we're ready for our early five AM start for our morning pickups. Additionally, there are sixty-two emergency generators that are installed in critical facilities throughout the district that we refuel semi-annually, and this vendor comes on site and takes care of all of those needs for us. As I mentioned, this is a bid re-award. In August of two thousand and twenty-three, we went through a procurement process for this service and entered into a contract with Lynch Fuel Oil. After about ten months, there were some challenges in fulfilling the services in that contract, and by mutual agreement, that contract is being terminated. And we are moving forward with Palmdale Oil Company and requesting a board approval of that contract for a three-year term. It'll be beginning January one of two thousand and twenty-five, continuing through the end of calendar year two thousand and twenty-seven to December thirty-first. The amounts shown are the maximum anticipated amounts. We don't know exactly how much fuel we'll need every year, but these are our maximum anticipated amounts of about one point two million per year for an overall contract award of three point six million. This is budgeted inside of the solid waste utility, and it's budgeted in our appropriate line item for gas and fuel. And it's collected annually through utility rates.
Great, thank you, Chris. Members, we'd like to open the floor to the board for discussion or questions you may have for Chris.
Move to approve agenda item eight point one.
Second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let the record reflect that the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chris, and great to see that award go to a Florida-owned business, so thank you. Agenda item eight point two, approve award. Under agenda item eight point two, the district seeks to approve the award of a three-year contract to Fleet Management Holdings LLC for ongoing maintenance and repair of solid waste trucks and equipment with an approximate expenditure of one, one point nine million dollars. Chris, take it away.
Thank you. So this item fits very nicely with the prior item. This is also supporting the solid waste vehicle and equipment fleet, the thirty-seven population that we have. And as mentioned before, this is a busy business, and we need real-time or near-real-time support for preventative and corrective maintenance and repair services, including towing services for that fleet. So this is a unique part of the business. You'll see in the picture on this slide that we do have an onsite garage. This is in the solid waste transfer station, so that we have this vendor working onsite at all times. We have two folks that are full-time working to support this fleet. It is a lot of wear and tear, and they are well utilized in that facility. So we began this procurement process, and again, all the thanks always go to Tiffany and her team. Can't thank her enough. Each month as we come here, we started this process in July, looking for qualified and experienced firms to provide this service. There was a ranking and qualification process and evaluation conducted. And at this time, we are recommending contract award to Fleet Services by Cox Automotive for a three-year term. It's a rate-based award based on services. As mentioned before, the maximum amount anticipated for these services is one point nine million dollars per year. The rate sheet shown is the billing rate expected. We have worked with this vendor for several years now. We're happy to see them competitively come in and have this bid award move forward. They have been a great partner to our solid waste division. This is also an operating expense in the solid waste utility and will be budgeted accordingly and is recovered annually through utility rates. And that concludes my presentation.
Very good. Thank you, Chris, for a thorough, thoughtful presentation on that one. I will open the floor, members, for any questions, or if in the absence of questions, a motion to approve the agenda item.
Move to approve agenda eight point two.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect that the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. And this is my last item this morning. We're on a nice run here. So this is, again, great work by the district's procurement team, moving forward and getting continuing service contracts with construction firms for installation of underground utilities. So this process began in September of this year, when we went out soliciting qualified and experienced vendors for the installation of these systems. We received five responses, and we scored them. And we only want our A students, so the folks that came up above ninety points, we're recommending award. It's true. You ask my children, we only like As. A students, so we're recommending continuing service contracts for those three firms that fell into that top block. Those three firms are folks that we know and some folks that are new to us. But even the ones that are new to us, we've begun working with them, and we're very pleased with their performance. What we do moving forward for these is we'll issue a task work order for each discrete scope of work to be issued to these vendors. We'll look to engage the most qualified construction firm. We'll look to distribute the workload equally by specialty, and then we'll make sure that our approach is fair and balanced as we distribute work between those three vendors. And here's our examples of work we would be performing with our underground contracting firms. We have installations of potable water, wastewater. I don't know that any of these firms are qualified for our natural gas system, but we'll probably also be looking to get some folks on board that can do work on the district's natural gas system as well. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Chris. Obviously, yeah, we've got, there's a lot of work on this front, not easy. And I know it's great to see we've got some high scores on the three bidders. What I would say is, in the spirit of, you know, tiger parents, make sure you let them know why they missed those five, six points so that they can get a hundred next time.
I like that, we will do that.
So in that, I will now open the floor for other members for discussion or in the absence, a motion to approve agenda item eight point three.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let the record reflect that the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
We will now move on to agenda item eight point four. This is the last item of business under general business. Eight point four covers the award of three-year continuing service agreements to the six top-ranked and selected firms for construction, engineering, and inspection materials testing services. Craig, welcome back. Why don't you go over eight point four with us?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Good morning, Mr. Vice Chair, fellow members of the board. Here to present these, very similar to what Chris had out there, is a three-year continuing services agreement. This one is for construction, engineering, inspection, along with construction material testing services. These services will be very useful for the construction management team managing their own in-house projects along with planning and engineering, bridge inspections, and possibly some utilization for the facilities group on some roadway lighting inspections, too. Ten, we had put it out to bid September of this year. We had ten responses, which we elected to, with the help of procurement, of course, we elected to choose the six highest-rated consultants for their services. Again, very simple, the assignment of services would be through task work orders, work authorizations. And some of the examples that we would utilize these groups for, of course, Catherine would be doing her group planning, engineering, bridge inspections, that's above and underground bridge inspections, to meet her yearly requirements, some surveying and mapping services, soil exploration, material testing services. And then, of course, the construction management team would utilize these services as supplemental services to like mill and resourcing contracts, upcoming guard rail, overhead trust construction, signalization construction, concrete ramp remediation projects that we have going on. And basically, we'll just pick and choose as we, what services we need to provide as supplementary services to the construction management team as within the next three years for the projects.
Great.
Basically it.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for the updates, Craig. Any, before we vote, any, I'd like to open the floor to fellow board members, questions, comments?
Move approval of item eight point four.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect that the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Craig. And now we're moving on to agenda item number nine, other business. We've got two items, two significant items under other business to cover. First, we will receive an update on the comprehensive plan, which requires no action on our part, but obviously, we all take a great interest in that process. And then we will discuss the two thousand and twenty-five board meeting dates, which will require board action. So agenda item nine point one, we will now hear from Catherine Lutzow, the district's planning and engineering manager, who will provide us with an update on the comprehensive plan. I know, Catherine, you've been very, very hard at work on this, so we're all eager to hear the latest.
Yeah, so definitely hard at work. We have finished some of the major preliminary data gathering efforts, so traffic counts, things of that nature. We've also finished our review of the existing comprehensive plan, as well as the state consistency review, identifying those required changes that we need to make to bring our new plan in compliance with current state requirements. We are currently updating and reviewing those objectives, policies, and goals to make those changes, as well as updating our supporting documentation based on the latest available information. We are also performing verification on the transportation model, calculating levels of service to finalize our capital improvement program. As a reminder, this plan is a five, ten, and twenty-year planning horizon. So some upcoming items to look forward to. January starts our intense stakeholder and public engagement coordination efforts. So we will be going to the city council meetings in January to start the coordination with them regarding a status update of where we are and the roadmap of how we go through the adoption process. We will also be holding a public engagement meeting, so more information on that. But the public will be invited to come, learn more about the process, and provide any input to district staff as we update our plan. February, we're looking to have a draft for review with hopeful March hearing transmittals going to the planning board and then the board of supervisors and cities accordingly. With, once we get it all approved, submittal to the state. As a reminder, this will be going through the full state-coordinated review process, so it's anticipated to be about a sixty-day review process. And then I can't do an update without just saying a quick thank you. As you mentioned, this is a lot of work, and a lot of individuals and entities are involved, from our utility side to various others that we've been reaching out to. Leadership has been very supportive of, hey, we need pieces and parts and information and data. So thank you to everybody who's provided information on very quick turnarounds for us. With that, are there any questions?
Thank you. One quick question, and I know we've got, the goal, by the agreement, the development agreement, we've got a date certain by which we've got to get this done. Are you confident at this point that we're on track?
We currently are on schedule, which is much thanks to Lee and to our consultant for keeping us on schedule. But that's, we have a lot to continue to work through, but right now we are on schedule.
Great. And the development agreement says, gives us a little wiggle room, but we're going to work towards it.
Great.
I mean, look, we're going to have it done before the end of the year, that's the goal.
Thank you for that, Stephanie, I appreciate that. Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say thank you to the whole team, Catherine, Lee, everybody. We've spent some time, I haven't spent nearly as much time as you all have, but I appreciate you all walking through the process with me and where you are currently in terms of the topics and the areas, the elements of the comp plan that you're intending to include and revise. It's a huge effort, and you're doing great work, so I really appreciate it. I would like to just know when we schedule those, the informational meeting, not necessarily the ones with the city councils. Obviously, I'm very interested in their thoughts and their feedback, but I'd like to perhaps attend the public meeting, just to kind of observe and see.
Our goal was to do the public meeting at the same date as y'all's board meeting.
Oh, that'd be great.
But it would be in the evening, because you need to do public hearings at five to five o'clock. So it's a catch twenty-two.
That would be fantastic. Thank you.
Great.
I'll just echo, I know you have to do a lot of quarterbacking. I think you mentioned that before, and so I appreciate your patience, because it's, again, your passion and everyone in here. Every time you guys talk about your jobs and you take them very seriously, and the passion comes through. And I know there's a lot of detail, so I appreciate all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ochs, Supervisor Ziegler, Catherine, thank you. And I'll just note, I mean, yeah, just to echo that, I really appreciate the hard work on this. I know there's a lot that has been done, a lot that will continue to be done. Appreciate your extra efforts coordinating your whole team, so please, please convey thanks. I'm excited to see how this process comes out, and you know, we're fortunate to have on this board, I mean, I'd like to thank Supervisor Ochs in particular for digging in on this. I don't, he wouldn't say this, but I would say he's, we've got one of the best land use lawyers in the state of Florida on this board. And we're fortunate, we're fortunate to have his input. So with that, you know, I look forward to see where twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five. um, uh, with that, you know, I look forward to see where where twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five uh leads us on that. Um, so with that, uh, we will then move on to agenda item nine point two, uh, which is to set the regular meeting uh schedule for next year. Uh, I thought there, I thought there might be some interest in changing the board meeting schedule uh from Wednesday morning to Thursday or Friday morning. I I certainly would have some interest uh on that front. Uh, but I, obviously, that's something that needs discussion. That's a big change. Uh, to that end, um, I'd like to open the floor now to comments uh from my fellow board members.
I'll defer to each of you. If neither works for me, I just do have a question for Stephanie. Just from a staffing standpoint, does either one cause more of an imposition or benefit, or is it indifferent?
There's enough of us to make it work.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, so I uh didn't uh originally have a conflict, and now I've developed a conflict. Um, so I have a standing work uh obligation that's gonna be the third Wednesdays in in twenty twenty-five, which is the same day that these meetings are held. So I cannot do the third Wednesday. Um, I'm on another uh district that meets the second Thursdays. Um, but in February, they're meeting the third Thursday. So if we were to do the third Thursday, I would have a conflict in February. Um, you know, I think Friday mornings generally are always open for me. Um, and I don't seem to have regularly scheduled work conflicts or other volunteer duty conflicts with Fridays. Um, I think we could work, if it was like the fourth Thursday, I could, I'm sure, make work. And obviously, I'll make it a priority to be at our meetings. Um, but if we're gonna do Thursday, I would say maybe the fourth Thursday. Uh, or basically any Friday would probably work for me.
Okay, and right now, and and I should know this, what, what for, what, what?
We do the fourth Wednesday. Except for on, like, we weren't gonna do it on Christmas, so we moved it up, and then budget is, we have to fit the two in.
Okay, and uh Supervisor Ochs, uh, your, your conflicts on, which, which Wednesday do you have?
It's, I checked the meeting dates, and it is, so I guess it's the fourth Wednesday. Yeah, it is the same meeting dates that we have scheduled for twenty twenty-five, so I do have a conflict with with that, so I would need to move it.
Is that in January as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, let me, I could pull it up here.
I know the, for me, the January meeting date, um, that Friday takes me out of the country, so I would have to miss. So I guess what I might ask is maybe um, I I like the notion of the, of the fourth Friday. It sounds like that's an open date for everybody. Uh, what I might suggest then is the fourth Thursday as to January, and then the fourth Friday as to the remainder of the year.
So you recommended January twenty-third would be the one, two, three, fourth Thursday?
That works for me.
And then going forward, it would be the fourth Fri- Okay, so February, we don't have a fourth Friday.
I just have a quick, is there? Yeah, is there any objection to considering the third Thursday of the, is there, is there?
I have a YMCA board, YMCA board meetings that day, and um
So the days of the week, Friday was the one that was open, because I have Tuesdays.
Friday is generally open for me.
And I have school board meetings on Tuesdays, the first and third, so that's out. Um, and Mondays, I think, are a little hectic for staff. I assume for board meetings.
Yeah, let's not do Monday.
Um, okay.
So, yeah, it looks like we're zeroing in on on Friday mornings.
We're on too many boards.
Yeah.
I resemble that remark.
Yes.
So February, do you wanna do the, the?
Twenty-eighth?
Oh, there's four.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's the, the twenty-eighth works.
Yeah, I'm open on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I think that, I think that works.
Fourth Friday, except for January, which is the fourth Thursday. Okay.
Yes, I think that.
We will advertise appropriately.
Very good.
Okay, good. And I know, obviously, yeah, September with the budget's a little different, but we, yeah, well, okay. Yes, okay, got it.
Do we need this in a form of a motion?
No.
Okay.
Oh, December, I guess. Do we need to, well, sorry, go ahead, Roy.
No, it's not really necessary to to do a motion.
Okay.
We can approve this unanimously informally.
Thanksgiving is on the twenty-seventh, which is a Thursday, so Friday would be.
Maybe for the sake of November and December, we call it the third Friday.
Yeah, I would just defer to staff for November, December, twenty-five, and get back to this.
Fair enough. Let's, that's a, that's a, I will accept that friendly amendment.
I'll send you all the dates, and then we're gonna have to, because of September, we have to do two.
Right.
So it'd probably be the twelfth and the twenty-sixth.
Okay, well, I think we've got it. We, is is that?
It's all good?
As long as you're clear. No, I think, I think we, I think we've got it. All right, well, good. Thank you for that, for that lively discussion, and thank you for everyone, everyone hanging in there with me as we tried to talk calendar dates and out loud, and yeah, the, thank you for that. Very good. I appreciate everyone's uh collaboration on that. I'm I'm looking forward to, which should be an exciting year ahead on the Friday, except when it's Thursday, except when it's November, December, and September, and at night. Very good. Uh, okay, uh, in that case, uh, it, it sounds like there's no need for a further vote, uh, you said, Roy. So in that case, uh, we will uh move on to our final uh agenda item. Um, uh, well, I guess, yeah, prior to adjourning, I just, I would just like to say, um, you know, thank you, uh, again, just reflecting on the holiday. Uh, it's, this is, we talk about this, it says on the signs, as you drive in, this is the most magical place on earth. This is a, probably the, in my opinion, the most magical time uh of the year, on the, at the most magical place on earth. And it's a wonderful time. It's great to see all the families, uh, particularly enjoying the holiday season, the Christmas season, celebrating Hanukkah with their families, and uh doing their shopping, and enjoying the rides, and all the great things that make make this such a special place. And I'm grateful for all of you, as I always am, but particularly this time of year, uh, for all the work you put in, uh, to, to make this a special, make sure that the, these experiences for our visitors are as special as they can possibly be, and as safe as they can possibly be. Uh, and I hope that, uh, in that spirit, uh, all of you will be able to take time to enjoy this uh, this Christmas season, uh, with your families and your friends, and take some time off and enjoy, and reflect on, on what was a, an eventful year, but a very happy year ultimately, uh, in the district, and look forward to great things ahead. And so I will wish you all, uh, Merry Merry Christmas, very Happy Hanukkah, very Happy New Year, and I look forward to a great year ahead. So, uh, with that, with that said, I will uh entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second, in that case, uh, let the, well, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, all opposed? Hearing none, let the record reflect. Motion passes unanimously. With that, I adjourn the December eighteenth meeting of the Central Florida Tourism Oversight Board at eleven eighteen AM. And we will see you in twenty twenty-five. Thank you.